And first, first item is accentuate the positive and we're going to turn it to Brett first.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. First want to start off with welcoming everybody here and this is a little bit of a bittersweet accentuate the positive. We have John Stone here who's been serving Sedexo in our district for many, many years, forty years with Sedexo. And over the course of time, twenty plus years probably with our district. He was the area manager down here from ninety-six to early two thousands and served Medford and Phoenix talent schools for Sedexo. Had been a great partner. After forty years of serving in the food service, he decided to retire, which we're happy for him and jealous. But he's looking forward to spending time with family and, and everything. And so I just want to recognize and present this plaque to John Stone for over twenty years of serving our district and forty years with Sedexo. Thank you for dedication to our schools. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd say a couple of words. So yeah, I just, we just welcomed our seventh grandchild and Monday, I haven't even seen her yet because I've been traveling to my account. So that's one of the reasons why I want to retire to, so I'm not traveling so much, spending nights in hotels and spending time with my, my wife and my seven grandkids, my six kids. So a lot of kids to spend time with. So people always ask me, what are you going to do in retirement? Well, there you go. But no, I, I've, you know, I spent from ninety-six to two thousand down here overseeing Metford, Phoenix Town. I've been district manager for the state of Oregon since then, supporting all of our teams in Oregon. And I must tell you, I, I always love coming down to Phoenix Town. It's probably my favorite district. The very welcoming district. You have a culture of being community and welcoming, right? Your board is amazing. You guys function very, very well. I'm very proud of this district from a, a outside person, right? Looking in because I see a lot of things in my travels around the different districts. You guys should be proud of what you've built here in Phoenix Town and continue with the culture that you've built because it's amazing and it's very impressive. So thank you for this recognition. It was not, not expected, but I know Brett and I talked when I was here last. And again, this, this district has a special place in my heart. I'll always come back down to say hi to folks even when I'm retired. But again, thank you so much for this recognition. I, I greatly appreciate it. So thank you, Brett.
You so much.
Thank you.
And congratulations. All right.
Good evening, Board. Shana Schleif here, principal at Phoenix Elementary School. I'm happy to have you here at PES this evening. I have a lot of accentuate the positives, so I'm going to stop, talk fast because I just want to recognize a lot of people. First of all, we have a new club here called Girls on the Run. I want to give a shout out to Katie McCormick and Zoe Boils. We have nearly twenty girls coming up here on Tuesdays and Thursdays, learning leadership stuff, working out. It's so awesome to see kids participating in after school events in elementary school. We also have our Fall Family BBQ Night next Monday here from five to seven. The Jackson County Fire District Five will be serving, will be grilling for us and we're excited to welcome families into our classrooms and go over some important information around student data and then helping families learn skills on how they can help at home. Last, another thing, you might be wondering why we couldn't find parking in the parking lot. At Phoenix Elementary, we host a lot of outside agencies and we use this as a hub for the community. So Listos is a parent education group that's happening here. And so that's what's happening on campus up in the primary week. Really excited that this Monday, we hosted our first PTO meeting. We've, we've, we haven't traditionally had a PTO, a functioning PTO for quite some time. We started it right before COVID and then, then COVID happened. And so now we're just getting back into that and we had over fifteen families show up on Monday. So I want to give a shout out to Sally Connor, Zoe Boils, Loria Delgado and Nubia Pineda, who helped spearhead reviving our PTO. And then last but not least, we, this is the beginning of the year and we have a lot of new staff here and I, you know, I just want to thank so much for our district for creating a mentor program where we have mentors to mentor the new people here. So I want to give a shout out to Jaclyn Fortner, Myrna Wolf, Sally Connor, Jennifer Mohat, Karen Tally, Zoe Boils and Allison Bailey for agreeing to be mentors for both our classified and our certified staff. So that's what's happening at PES.
Good evening, Board. Heather Lowe, principal over at Talent Elementary. I could echo a lot. This is like to be us. But I want to give a special recognition to our special education team at Talent. You know, starting the year off is always tricky, especially for kids who have some, you know, particular special needs. And so they've just done an incredible job making sure that we have all of our plans in place and making sure that people, that teachers and staff and students and everybody's ready to welcome kids into our classroom, especially I want to share that we have taken the further steps for our inclusion work and just getting some of our high, high needs kids included into general education classes. So it's just been phenomenal to see that. Speaking of phenomenal, I just want to give a shout out to also the SPED team for their work on, around our golden tickets, which is our positive behavior support and how we really encourage kids. We've given out more than a hundred tickets to kids saying, way to go, way to follow the school rules. And so it's just really fun to see kids jazzed up about that. We also have our barbecue next week, so you can come by on Tuesday at five if you're hungry and didn't make it on Monday. Talent's also using the Fire District to grill for us, so that'll be fun. And tomorrow, if you want to get a little exercise, we have our first fun run of the year, which always happens at one thirty. It's a great tradition. We've been doing it for, I don't know, fifteen plus years at Talent. So I'm excited to see all those kiddos run. And then last but last least, I wanted to share that this week, we welcomed an outside agency, SWIFT. And they've been conducting small group, focus group interviews at the elementary schools and the middle school, really centering some questions around equity and how the district, the schools, and the different groups that we serve and interface with our school district experience equity, issues of equity. And so I got to participate in an interview yesterday morning with two of my leaders in my building. And then currently, they were just meeting with some Spanish speaking families, but they interviewed students this morning and it's just a phenomenal experience to help me reflect upon our practices when it comes to equity. And they're going to be summarizing this, what they've learned in these interviews and kind of shooting it back to us in about a month or two. So I'm eager for that. So whoever arranged that, Tiffany, Kelly, thank you. It's a great opportunity. So that's it from Talent.
Thanks, Heather. Kent Valier, principal at Orchard Hill. It's great to be here tonight. Just have three quick things to report. I was inspired by Javier Del Rio. Some of you were in the Phoenix High School Theater when Javier shared some information about strategic goals. And one of them, and I know, is increasing our daily attendance. And Javier encouraged us all to find one little contribution that we could activate to help support those goals. So I've taken, I don't know why, kind of by accident, but I like doing it. Every single day I get on the intercom and I report the day's attendance. And I know we're shooting for ninety percent. And I'm really happy to say that we only had one day that we've missed ninety percent attendance and that was at eighty-nine percent. So I'm really proud of our families and our students for making that commitment to, you know, increase their seat time in classrooms. Next, I want to talk to you a little bit about next Wednesday's family engagement night. We're going to focus on math, again, chipping away at our increased student achievement at Orchard Hill. We are going to do some math games and I thought, oh, let's get two hundred and three hundred decks of cards. So I thought, who has cards around this area? And Michelle Geisler has a friend that worked at Seven Feathers, so I filled out the little form on their website and said, hey, we could really use some decks of cards. So about four days later, we got two boxes of three hundred playing cards. So we're going to send those home with families along with math games that they'll learn next Wednesday night. And speaking of Michelle Geisler, she was selected the teacher of the month for rave orthodontics. And though, her kids will have a pizza party next week. Also publicly, I want to thank Sarah Instrom and Tammy Wojak. They've just done a great job getting this math night organized with the games and the cards and making sure that that will be a nice event for our students and our family. Thank you. Catherine, Talent Middle.
Thank you, Kent. Good evening. My name is Catherine Holden. I'm the principal of Talent Middle School. I also want to start with the highlight around the SWIFT Equity Tool and having those folks come into our community. It was, I think there was just some really unexpected positives that came out of it. Even Allison, when she was calling some of the families to invite the students to participate. We picked a few students who had some challenges last year, but it was started out really strong this year. And so Allison called, invited them to be part of this kind of leadership opportunity and the, the families were so excited that we were asking their students to be spokespeople for our school. And so even just at the beginning, that was really positive. And then today and yesterday, the teachers who participated also felt really like they left saying, oh, my gosh, it was so fun to have that conversation. It was so good to reflect on what we've been doing and how much, how far we've come. And so, yeah, I didn't, I don't know that I expected the experience itself to be so positive. And so that was a highlight for sure. Our fall sports season is underway and we have about a hundred and twenty athletes participating right now. We're feeling really good about that. Derek Rodman did a great job of expanding our sports program by including our sixth graders. He worked with the Southern Oregon region and, and made that happen so that we could include them in all of our sports. And I do just want to quickly thank all of the coaches and folks who are making this happen right now. Alyssa Barber, Savannah Sayers, Megan Nelson, Lisa Richardson, Mitzi Hutzel, Jordan Tooker, Michael DeMello, Brent Baucher, Jordan Earhart, Amber Jacobson, Devin Rodman and Haylen Holloway, as well as a big thank you to the core team, Derek Rodman, Jessica Morga and Kristi Ann Haas. So that, that group of people are just really holding our students right now. And I was just at a volleyball game and it was exciting, let me tell you. And lastly, we want to just acknowledge really the hard work of all of our staff right now. They have come out so strong and ultimately it's created a lot of positive first three weeks of the school year when it comes to our school-wide expectations. A couple of them, you know, shifted or we're, we're being more consistent with them right now. And it really is having a big impact on how good the school feels. Even walking around with the SWIFT folks, we did a tour today. And like everywhere I went, I felt so good. I felt good about the cafeteria. I felt great about the lunch. Oh, the kids were out at the field. I felt great about that. The hallways felt great. The classrooms felt great. And so it just, yeah, to be here in this moment, September compared to last September, I'm just feeling so encouraged by how hard the staff has worked to really consistently hold our students to a standard of respect and safety and responsibility and kindness. And lastly, we too have our back to school night happening Thursday, so a week from tonight. You can only come and get a cookie there, but you've probably, hopefully you've had enough burgers by that point in the week. But we're very excited to welcome our families into the school and show off all the things that we've already been doing. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Kalen Cross, proud principal of PHS. I just have a few couple of things. We actually had our open house event last night. We also served cookies, so didn't get on the burger train for that. But we were very impressed with the turnout. And we had our wonderful band play, our cheerleaders were there, welcoming families and our staff was just so excited to greet families, welcome them into the classroom. Our family engagement focus last night was really making sure that families felt empowered to know whether or not their students were on track to graduate, both as far as credits are concerned and pirate points. And so we spent some time with our advisory classes, doing some education around that. And then our families were able to tour their student schedule, meet teachers face to face and just put a face to the name when they're getting emails and different things. And it was a great experience and we're really thankful for that. And a couple of other things, we had a wonderful first safety drill on Wednesday. Everything was smooth. And I know that that seems minor, but when you have so many people in a building, getting out quick and safely is really important. And so we're thankful for that. And shout out to Dave Earhart for making that happen. And then last but certainly not least, we welcomed our new alternative education teacher to our building. Her name is Mindy Terrelli. She is a wonderful addition to our staff and is able to give us some new perspectives on how we're hosting our, our alternative education programs, both Compass and our Virtual Academy Program. And it's not perfect yet, but we're super thankful for her perspective and being able to shift some things and serve students who may not be have, have been served in the traditional model as well as we had hoped they would be. So I'm excited to see where we're going with that. And I'm just super thankful for her to be on our campus. And that's all from PHS.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Just one thing really quick. We had great attendance at our Art in the Park last Friday. As you guys know, we do some kind of activity where we bring people in. Our in-person activities are always optional, but we still had over fifty percent attendance from our elementary students, plus three of their pre-K siblings, which is always fun to have those guys out there. Want to thank Joe Zavala for coming out and capturing that on film and getting it, taking care of us on social media. And we're proud of being able to offer those in-person activities that not a lot of our, our competitor hybrid schools in the valley do. So that is it for BTRI.
Thank you. Good evening. Amy Hanz here, Food Service. And I would just want to take a moment to thank all of the local farmers. You guys got a basket sitting there in front of you and that is just a small sample of some of the wonderful produce that we've been delivered here in the last couple of weeks from farmers like Frye Family Farms, Namus Pears and JL Orchard. May not seem like a lot, but getting all of that fresh produce here into the high school and out to all the schools and on to those salad bars, it really makes a big impact. And it's really fun to see the kids get excited about some of that front, fun, fresh, local fruits and vegetables. We're really excited to be part of the elementary family nights. And so we just want to thank the elementaries for including us and we are looking forward to that next week. Also want to thank a lot of the elementary office managers and teachers and even the student helpers. Our FFVP program is up and going again. And, you know, getting those little bite samples out to all three hundred kids, it may seem small, but a lot goes into that planning and it takes a lot more than just us and food service. So I really have to thank the, the schools for all of their support and help in getting that out to the kids. And then I just want to leave you guys with a little teaser. October fourth is National Taco Day. I apologize, I didn't get it into your books, but I did print some pages there. We'd love to have you come to any of the schools because we will be recognizing National Taco Day and having tacos at all the schools. And then with upcoming October, back by popular demand, our pumpkin apple spice parfait. So if you didn't get it last year, come this year, we will have it. And because it was so popular, we're going to throw out homemade pumpkin apple spice muffins too.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
I just wanted to say it twice. I'm Rachel Garner. I'm the new executive director over at Armadillo Technical. I'm at most of this side of the room, but not most of this side. So the positive that's happening over at API right now is our construction, which doesn't look so positive right now, but our students have been so resilient and awesome and adaptable. Just had some toilets break and they, you know, they're rocking with it. We also just got a fund today to run a podcast through Navigations to College. So excited for that to start for our students when we come back on campus in our second term. And yeah, I'm just so happy to be here.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
I would like to say, I went to the high school back to school first assembly. I don't know. I know that it has a name and I just butchered it, but it was amazing. The, the students did great. The atmosphere was great. And then afterwards, I took Amy up on her offer and went and had one of those little Chinese back, grab and goes. It was delicious. I had a couple of teachers stop me and say, I haven't tried that yet. What does it taste like? And, but it was nice walking through the hall, seeing the kids happy, chatting with some of the kids. And I talked to staff and they were all, this is like the smoothest back to school week we've had since like two thousand eighteen. I was like, I don't even remember what I was doing in two thousand eighteen. So this, you could remember that. So it was just great seeing a lot of smiles, seeing a lot of happiness and, and everyone just kind of like, we're ready for amazing year. And everyone feeling that and you could just feel it by walking through the school and the whole atmosphere. So it was great. So great job to everyone that is doing great and supporting the kids. And I love it.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else? Okay, Superintendent Report, or no, I'm skipping something. Citizen comments. Did we get any forms, Tiffany? No. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board? Oh, do we have anyone online that you can see, Chris? That's okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, I was psychic there. All right, Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. I just have a couple of quick things today. State assessment scores were released. You may have saw some news stories in Oregonian and I imagine some local news will start picking it up as well. We'll share some of our data with you. Our report cards here coming up as well. You know, we have some bright spots, but we also have some severe challenges that really are going to be addressing our strategic planning over the next several years and really kind of solidifies why that strategic plan is so important. And then my last thing is Representative McLean will be here October thirteenth. She's on the Education Committee and a influential member of that committee. She's going to be visiting Phoenix High School where she once taught and once a pirate, always a pirate. So we'll be hosting her the morning of thirteenth. And we'll share that with the board. And if anybody can make it, that'd be great. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Next, we have report. Alex Soul from the School Safe Zone Solution is here with us. And floor is yours, sir. Yeah, fifteen minutes. Thank you. Tim, oh yeah, make sure that mic's on there. There you go. Green light. There you go.
Hi, is that on? Okay, so this is the first time we're running this with someone running it for me, so. No, no, you're okay. Mic over here. Yeah. Hi, so my name is Alex Soul. And let me just give you a little backstory about myself quickly. I survived a public shooting in nineteen ninety-three. I was shot. And what that experienced me firsthand is how fast, how fast in certain shooting event happened before anyone has a chance to even understand or respond to what is going on. And that is a very relevant point in this discussion as it pertains to school and school shootings. After Sandy Hook, that devastated me so so terror. What happened that day. And that day should have been studied as far as I'm concerned i- i- in a way that, that was comprehensive and offered solutions. But firstly, I thought, like many people, that Sandy Hook was going to be the end of catastrophic school shootings, that the events were so horrific that we would figure out a way to make sure this doesn't happen. As you can see here, this is two thousand and twelve when Sandy Hook happened. We have had a meteoric rise in school shootings with fatalities all the way straight line up. Now, there are many reasons for this and I will get into that. But none of this that we have been doing from here, Columbine, to here has answered, how do you protect children, educators, from being catastro- being in a mass shooting with mass casualty events? Nothing that school districts have been doing have been able to present that. We have been looking for answers outside of the school for persons that are inside of the school. If we could go to, does anybody here know how many people have died from school fires since Columbine? Zero. Not one death from a fire. Why is this? If you look here, what is mandated for our children's safety by the federal and state government? Legally mandated federal, state emergency fire safety, building and construction regulations? Legally mandated sprinkler systems, fire extinguishers? Legally mandated fire escapes used in fire drills, mandated hardwired fire alarms? School shootings? We have had four hundred and thirty school shootings since Columbine. Three hundred and fifty-six thousand students have experienced gun violence at school. Five hundred and twenty-six injuries, four hundred and twenty-three deaths. And when you quantify these deaths, a lot of these people are trapped inside of classrooms, if you can understand the horrific nature of that. Now, look up here. Children are forced to retreat to unfortified classrooms and hide in terror during school shootings. Example, if you'll notice these doors, some of them I noticed do not have hard corners. That means if a shooter got in here, he would be able to kill people in those classrooms through that glass. So now I want you to hear from two children that survived this episode and hear what they had to say about this experience. Can you play Ashley and then go to minute started at one forty-five, please? I have it on. No commercial. Thank you.
So we could hear everything.
Can you make it full screen?
Ox Brown was trying to warn us, but then she got shot. And so we just kind of heard more gunshots, obviously. We heard all the loud noises and stuff and like the static of the speaker. I remember the static of the speaker really well. There was two doors. One was the one next to the cubbies, like I said, and then one was like across the classroom that connected to another classroom. And I just, I just remember being so afraid of that other door that maybe like he would come in through that other classroom and go into our room.
You pause it right there. So that door that she is referring to, I want you to hear from someone who survived, the only survivor of her entire classroom that was murdered. And she survived and he came in through that very door that she's talking about right now. This is ten years later. Please note that nothing has been studied from the shooting prior to understand how to make a better outcome for the next school shooting.
Over a desk and she was trying to.
Go to the next Mia, yeah, the Mia video. Sorry.
There's a door between our classrooms.
From the, from the beginning, please.
Watch out for me. And then she got an email and then she went to go lock the door and he was in the hallway. And they made eye contact. And then she went back in the room, showed us, go hide. And then we went to go hide behind my teacher's desk and behind the back racks. And then he dropped a little window and then he went to the other classroom. And then he went. There's a door between our classrooms and he went to there and shot my teacher and told my teacher to knife and shot her in the head. And then he shot some of my classmates and the white horse. When I went to the back racks, he shot my friend that was there. And I thought he was going to come back to the room. So I grabbed the blood and I put it all on me. And
What did you do then? When you put the blood on your?
Stay quiet. And then I got my teacher's phone and called my mom.
What did you tell her?
I called the police and tested the police in my classroom.
If there was something that you want people to know about that day and about you, right? Or things that you want different, what would it be?
Just kidding.
Do you feel safe at school? Right now?
Things that don't need to happen.
Please, wait, wait. Yeah, pause there. A- and it is going to happen again and it's going to happen again and it's going to happen again because school shootings are now part of the culture somehow because shooters understand that schools are soft targets that they can penetrate, that they can access, that they can accomplish their aims. Remember, this event takes place over five minutes. The choice for the shooter to grab a weapon and destroy a community in a school is a decision that can happen like that. Now, I want to talk to you about, so what is the safe zone solution? The safe zone solution is accountability. It is accountability. It is taking all of the experiences from shootings in the past and being accountable to a different outcome in the future. It is about applying the relevant solutions for the relevant problem. So please go to the next. So the safe zone solution is a three-part redundancy. Each part facilitates the other. No, not this video, please. The next slide. Thank you. Yeah. So part one, external entryway doors. Fortifying the exterior entryway with bullet resistant glazing is essential. This is the vestibule that Adam Lanza penetrated. Behind that opening was Mrs. Hoxton and the school psychologist. 15 seconds of that door being shot through school door by shooting through the glass killed every student inside of that classroom. Now, I tell you this and why this is so significant is there were 16 children in a classroom with a substitute teacher that she made a decision because she knew the classroom that she could not hold threat that they were facing. Of her children to the bathroom, all of them. And that is where they died. All 16, including the teacher. The
Yeah.
Sorry. No problem. Okay. So had this been delayed? The delay here is essential to allow the faculty to coordinate a calm, reasonable response to safe zones. You now, can you please play this video? To demonstrate how fast a shooter can shoot through, no, uh, uh, about right here. You can pause it here and, and, and go to, to the next slide. The delay on the exterior entryways is so pivotal because within one minute of him breaching, three children were killed from that entryway breach. And had the glazing been on that window, it would have taken more than six minutes to penetrate. There wouldn't have been one fatality in that school. Step two, the safe zone solution, we put a bullet resistant internal classroom door on every single classroom. Okay. And can you go to, and I would like to demonstrate to you how this door is installed in school. This company has an amazing patent that they created, which allows you to do a whole school in a day, day and a half. Okay, now I'd like to show you the door in action. Please go to the next video. Yeah. Hey, now this, this, go ahead, go to the next video. This is how fast a teacher can achieve safety for her students and herself with this door. The, you hear the bullets pop outside? That's it. Four seconds. Everybody safe inside of that classroom. That door cannot be penetrated. That glass cannot be shot through. The children cannot be accessed. This is how fast a child can achieve safety. The next That's there. Safety is achieved. Can we go now to part three? Thank you. The next part is there is software now that police can use. This is an active law enforcement technology created by one of the fathers of the victims of Parkland. What this does, you see, there's two kinds of shootings, the kind that happened at an elementary school where the threat comes from the outside coming in. And then there's high school where the threat is usually from a student internally. So what happens is while we would have bullet resistant doors, if anyone was shot in the hallway unable to get to a safe zone, what ends up happening is EMT cannot treat victims until the police have neutralized the threat. And what ends up happening in this process is a lot of people bleed out. And with this software, it allows law enforcement on the way to the scene to see the blueprint of the school, click on the, on the link where the access to school's camera. And when you click on it, it tells you exactly where the shooter is before they get to the scene. And that allows them to neutralize the threat in half of the time. Okay. So I want to take a look inside of the numbers of what's been happening to school districts with school shootings. As we have had an exponential rise in shootings, school districts are being sued more and more. So this is the ballpark cost, let's say, of a small elementary school with 80 bullet resistant doors. And this is just a speculative ballpark. Even if we're plus minus 100,000, let's just say 350,000 to put doors on the entire school, do the necessary blazing where necessary. This is what Parkland just paid in lawsuits. $156 million. Six students died hiding under their desks, shot through the glass in the door, and that is a part of that lawsuit. You go to the next slide, please. As you can see here, Rob Elementary School is set to be demolished next year. An entire school is going to be razed to the ground. The cost of that school is enough to put doors on multiple school districts. You go to the next. Okay. What is the collateral damage of ongoing shootings without different outcomes? These shootings are getting more horrific. They're, they're on the news all the time. Students, teachers, parents, police. After shooting, property values go down dramatically where the shooting took place. Teachers are leaving their profession. Parents are choosing homeschooling over in-person school. Fewer new teachers in schools are being demolished. You go. Yes. So we at the Safe Zone Solution would like to make a proposal to any school district that allow us with our grant writers to help put in a pilot project for one school to demonstrate the exponential benefit that people will have by having the exterior fortification combined with the redundancy of the internal classroom safe room doors. You will give children and teachers absolutely what they need when they need it. If you can go. So lastly, this is Sandy Hook before the shooting. This is Sandy Hook two years after the shooting. I would ask everyone, if what happens inside of this school is so atrocious, so horrible that we cannot even tolerate the memory of the building being erected, then how can we not make the investment in a different outcome? What we have been doing does not work to protect children and teachers from school shootings. If we do not do something different, this will continue to happen over and over and over again. And children deserve a different outcome. That little girl should not go back to a school district that cannot protect her. That little girl saw her classmates be murdered and she is forced to return to a school that probably cannot protect her. That is true. The Safe Zone Solution seems, seeks to fix that. So with that, I conclude and I ask for any of your questions.
We working? Okay. Any questions for Alex?
Alex, I, I want to thank you for your presentation and, and I appreciate your passion and in your background explains why you have that passion too. I can assure you of one thing, that is that our school district takes very seriously the, the safety of our kids. And we have, we have a history going way back after Columbine, actually, when we attended a, a conference back in Denver. And since then, we've done certain things. We do have an SRO program which cuts down the response time tremendously, as you pointed out. And, and we have that in both the, in Phoenix and in talent. We have also been looking into other things such as that you pointed out, like the laminate that goes on the glass. And our understanding is that somebody on the outside cannot penetrate that glass. However, somebody like a police officer on the inside can. So we, we have that in place. We're, we're, we're looking into that sort of thing. But we're certainly open to any other ideas. The, the, the doors that you mentioned. I've also heard that there's perhaps a, you could put, you could retrofit it with pick an existing door and, and provide that protection. And that, that's a goal. Yeah. But
Doors, those doors, the door that's
But I don't really have any other questions for you now, although I'd like to keep you as a research. Because you, you have done your homework on this. And if we have questions, we'll certainly get back to you. That, that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Rick. Sarah?
I just have one question. When you mentioned the locking device was what was special about the door? And I noticed on the diagram, there were six, art six red dots. So can you just explain that a little bit?
Those are points of reinforcement that go up when the locks turn that stop.
Any other questions?
You mentioned you're looking for a partner school in the area. Have you done this presentation to any of our partners, school, any of our school districts in the area or has anyone reached out to you for, to, to be that representative school?
No, we, we, we were talking with the Ashland School District over one second. But they're, they're having they, they're not seeing want to say this last thing. The combination of external and internal fortification is quite sudden breach is the number one most common problem with hypothalamus because it does not allow coordination. Once you start taking bullets, it's open. Pandemonium begins. It's very, very hard to control of the situation. That's why force mitigation attention that can be given to your outside is the most essential.
I do have one question for you, Alex. The, the weapons that can be used. Is there a limit?
That's the question for the glazing company. They have degrees of protection. And when they do these glazing companies, they come through and they walk through with the superintendent, someone like a researcher, like you said, or someone. And they identify, much like what happened after fires, when buildings got too high and they invented the fire escape. They had people walk through and say, where could someone get trapped? Well, the shooter could reach right there. These people right here let's make sure that that room is fortified. And there would have to be a sort of walkthrough inspection to determine where the vulnerabilities are, what level of glazing is required. Some of it is just film. You don't want to make an entry point. So you just don't have to buy the most expensive product. You can buy the cheaper film that just prevents the glass from going to the floor, which creates a makeshift so there's many degrees. I would suggest on the entryway up there, that has a level five bullet shield raised for a bullet
Thank you so much. Just, just one last question, just to understand. You, you've created a, in essence, a nonprofit organization. And you, you sort of work with this company that does the glazing and the doors as a solution to what you're talking about, right? Just so I understand the relationship.
We are working with people, but we are what I prepared. I'm so passionate about this because I believe in this. There will, this will ultimately be part of the building safety standards. Because this is not going to stop. And, 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 and yes, so we are, what I would like to do is find the money for, say, this entire school. And our organization partnered with you to implement the concept of external and internal protection. And mind you, no one other than the color of the door, which you could pick any color, there is no psychological effect in having that door, other than the benefit of knowing that everyone will know that if this happened, the people behind those doors will not be able to be hurt. And that is such a critical, critical for the peace of mind of the educators that work in that building, for the principal, for everyone involved. Even the parents and the, all of us will feel better knowing that my child is behind this door versus the current door.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Given us a lot to think about. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, next is the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to present to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll second it. Oh.
Seconded by Rick. Thank you, Rick. Any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Action items. First item of business is appointing budget committee members. We have two returning budget committee members who have applied for our two vacancies. We have a motion.
I move to appoint Nate Shin and Mark Vargas to the budget, budget committee for three-year term. I move to appoint Nate Shin and Mark Vargas to the budget, budget committee for three-year term.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Rick. Rick seconds. Any discussion? Yes, very, very much so. And we thank them for their continued service for sure. We will now vote. Rebecca.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. And they are approved. Thank you, Nate and Mark. We appreciate you. Budget calendar for 24, 25. Did you have anything on this? Okay. Have a motion?
I move to adopt the budget calendar for the 2425 budget year as presented.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Dawn. Discussion. Okay, who will vote? Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Budget calendar is approved. Next is H3 meal prices. Do I have a motion or did you have anything here? Okay. Motion?
I move to adopt the meal prices for the 2324 school year as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly. Thank you, Rebecca. Any discussion? Just a reminder, these are the same prices as last year, right? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. H4 is nomination for OSBA LPC Committee Regional Member. It has been two years. I have a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll do it. I move that the Phoenix Talent School District nominate Sarah Crawford. For the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position five.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Polly. Discussion.
Just happy to see this happen again.
Yes. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for the nomination. I appreciate it.
Well, we got a vote still. We'll see how that goes. All right, Rebecca.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
I abstained.
Dawn?
Absolutely yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote thousand times yes. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, now thank you. I think, right?
Yes. No, we really appreciate your work this past two years somehow. Okay, H5, ATI's HVAC equipment.
Yeah, this is just a reminder with Esser rules that the ATI board needs to approve it. And the governing body up at that charter school needs to approve it. So. That's why it's presented for, to the board.
Great.
I move to approve the use of Esser funds for the capital expenditures for ATI's HVAC equipment and the purchase of a van. I'll second that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Rebecca. Discussion. Just want to say I drive by the school a lot and I see the progress that's happening. So it's coming along. Yes, looks very nice. So looking forward to it being cool and for you having a band of transport children. So there we go. Okay. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Is approved. Okay, we will take a recess. It's 6:58. We'll return at 7:08.
There's some extra good goodies over there with brownies and lemon bar.
Okay.
Just like to say, as people watch this back, we have an incorrect meeting ID posted for the meeting. So people were unable to join the meeting via Zoom. So we apologize for that. And we will make sure we, that doesn't happen again. But I'm glad that our meetings are recorded and Chris, thanks for making that all happen. So. Next item on the agenda is the facilities and bond update.
Yeah, I'll share for John. Just want to let you know, we did get vandalized at the bus barn over the weekend. We are looking at really, it's, it's been the last couple of times in the last six months or so. So we're looking at increasing the visibility with lighting. Looking at what we can do for wireless out there to put our camera system on. And then ultimately putting some fencing and some gates to protect that front area and that, that facility for our buses. Also want to share that we do have T-Talent Elementary and Talent Middle School Seismic's still on pace to. Be started next summer. We should have the construction documents done, 100% done, middle of October. And then we'll have estimates about a month later and then that'll be ready for the summer of 24 for both those buildings. Culver Fields, ZCS, it by tomorrow, they look like they will have a draft master plan of Culver. And then we'll share that and get some feedback. And then they will hope to have a final plan by the second meeting in October. So in about a month or so, and then we can continue with that process. Designs for the tennis courts are also in the works as well. So they're working with that. They've already had discussions with the city of Phoenix and it seems like there's not going to be any hurdles to, to. So to speak, to, to get that done. So we're looking forward to moving on that project as well. And that's it for facilities.
Thank you. Questions? It's been a while since you asked about the pool, Sarah. Would you want to ask about a pool? No, kidding. Okay.
Next time, right, is a draft plan. So I'm preparing my.
Okay, good. Excellent. Okay, Legislative OSBA update.
You, you might have heard me say, oh, shoot, because I wasn't prepared and I was trying to scramble. So why do we want, I'm, thank you for nominating Sarah. She is a great sidekick for me because without her sometimes, um, yeah, I would be like running around. Yes. Um. So, um, so yes, but OSBA, the. The Board of Directors is having their retreat Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I was just looking at the agenda. I forgot which Sunday, I thought if I pulled up the agenda on Board Books, it would say something, but it didn't. Jim Green wrote it in an email and I don't know where the email is, but I'm sure it's important work that we're working on. Um, for the Board of Directors, I know that we're, we're going to go through the plans of what, what different committees have been doing. And there will be nominations for the executive committee. And there will be some good work and then I will be going to PACE. And then Sarah and I have, well, I'm going to be talking to, when I'm up at. The retreat, I'm going to talk to the Lori with legislation about maybe how we can finesse our. Legislative roadshow to be a little bit more. Productive for our region. And so I may have some news on that when I, when I get back. And then today, I, today has been like one of those days where. But the State Board of Education met today and there's some pretty hefty topics. That is coming up, that some of them are first read, some of them are forced reads, some of them. So I just wanted to, you might be getting some more information from Sarah and I. And at some point, I, I don't know if we need to have a discussion. A lot of it is like adding Division 22 standards or changing curriculum. And my, my own personal point of view, I just want everyone to know when I'm advocating. I always make sure I'm advocating in my perspective as one board member. But my point of view is that. The students are so far behind in math and reading. And that anything that's going to take away time or money or resources to. So we cannot get back on track because we need to have our students back at grade level, I'm against. So some of the new curriculum, I'm just against because is now a time to bring in new curriculum to a school when teachers. I've talked to teachers and they're barely able to teach the basics and having to learn a new curriculum right now. Is this the correct time to be bringing in some of these curriculums? I'm, it's a question. I think it's something that we should look into. I, I had read some testimony and they're like, well, we're like the health curriculum, we'll send people out and, and you know, it's only going to cost. It's not going to cost that much because you have to buy curriculum anyways. But we're going to be at a, when all these curriculums come through is right when our financial cliff will hit. And so it will, I mean, they're figuring, oh, we all have money, like Lego Segway maybe, and we don't. And so I think it's important to kind of, I just kind of wanted you guys to know that that's how I'm advocating. So if that's something you guys feel that's not appropriate, let me know. But it's something I feel strong with that we need money. We just can't be spending money on all these different things. That's very important that we. Look at reading and math and how that's going to affect and putting a new health curriculum throughout every. You know, kindergarten teachers already struggling because a lot of the kindergartners are coming in, not kindergarten ready and what that means. And so that's this conversation that's happening throughout the. Yeah, the state and different. And I'm not against changing things. I'm just, is now the right time? It's kind of, I kind of feel like, you know, we have a leaky roof and someone's decided we want to change the flooring. And it may be not the right time. That's kind of how I feel. Did you want to add anything, Sarah? Yeah. I guess that's it. Any questions?
I, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I for one, and I think I was prepared, but really appreciate the truth of your serving in this capacity. It keeps us informed and, you know, thank you for that.
My pleasure. I really am super thankful that Dawn and I are on the same board and serving in this regional world together. I think it really is helpful to have that connection and then this service level and then the region wide as well. So I appreciate serving with Dawn.
And I appreciate serving with you. And I've been told by some members of OSBA that we do make, you and Sarah make an excellent team. I wish all the other teams could be like that. I said, well, Sarah and I have worked on very many projects together. So. I do, I'm so glad. I hopefully she wins because it, it's much easier to have someone that you work with well and you're in the district with. So.
Excellent. Thank you both. I may need some help here, Dawn, with rules of order, but we had a. Just a clarification on the ATI request. Their minutes reflect, they actually need to purchase two vans. But our motion was, said a van, which that's what it said in, in the suggested motion. So. I don't know if we could just have the minutes reflect that or if we should just. Vote again to clarify. The motion. I, I just don't want there to be any question. What do you think?
I would say vote again just to be safe and that way everyone knows what they're doing. So if you would like me to suspend the rule and we need to suspend the rules and. I would think so.
Okay. Yep, that makes sense. I don't have my, I didn't, so one day I didn't bring my book.
So I, I'd rather caution on, on doing things versus not. So I think. In my mind, suspending the rules, so I moved to suspend the rules to bring the action item to have, to correct. That would be two vans we were voting for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dawn and Rick. Rebecca? Yes, we're voting. Suspend the rules.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick? Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. And so let's see, who made the original motion? Was that Sarah? Do you want to make a motion to amend your motion and then that'll clarify it, I think?
I move to amend my previous motion to. Approve the use of Esser funds for the capital expenditures for ATI's HVAC equipment and the purchase of two vans.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Polly. Okay. Now we can vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Two vans it is. That should clear it up. Thank you.